Welcome, everyone, to the open session for tonight's November 4th City Council meeting. Apologies for a brief late start. We had a heavy closed session and council will be going back to close after conclusion. Is this microphone loud? Where they gone? Here in my own ears. All right. We'll start out with the invocation. Pastor Jimmy, you here? Oh, we're gonna do roll call first? Okay, we're gonna do roll call first. There we go. Call at the order. Madam Clerk, make sure we did everything right.
Thank you. Councilmember Keldorf.
Here.
Councilmember Drew.
Here.
Councilmember Boiles. Mayor Pro Tem Baldino.
Present.
And Mayor Pimentel.
Here. Okay, Pastor Jimmy, the floor is yours. We'll follow that with a pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Boiles. Everyone, please rise.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you today with grateful hearts, thankful for the privilege of gathering and freedom to serve our community. We ask for wisdom and guidance for the council and all who take place and take part of this meeting. Grant us discernment to make decisions that promote justice, peace, and the common good. Lord, help us to listen with compassion, to speak with respect, and to act with integrity. Bless our city, its leaders, all the people that live here and work here. May your presence bring unity when there's division, hope when there's discouragement, and light when there's confusion. It's in Jesus's name that we pray, and we thank you. Amen.
Do you want me to pledge allegiance? A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Jimmy. Appreciate it. Thank you, Councilmember Boiles. We'll start out. We have two special presentations. The first will be Spark of Love. Councilmember Drew.
All right, I'm first up. All right, proclamation, City of El Segundo. Whereas, in an effort to provide for children who otherwise might not experience the joy of the holiday season, the City of El Segundo Fire Department, along with other Southland Fire agencies, has participated in the Spark of Love program for the past 30 years and has collected toys and food items donated during the holidays. And whereas the ever upward spiraling cost of living burdens disadvantaged families, who may not be able to give gifts during the holiday season without help from the Spark of Love program. And whereas the true holiday spirit is reflected in unselfish giving, and our thoughts and hearts go out to those less fortunate than ourselves. And whereas in the past, with the help of civic-minded citizens who live and work in our community, hundreds of toys plus food items have been collected and distributed to children and families in El Segundo and other South Bay cities. Now therefore, on this fourth day of November 2025, the mayor and the members of the City Council of the City of El Segundo, California, do hereby proclaim November 17th, 2025 through December 19th, 2025 as the Spark of Love Toy Drive. And accepting this proclamation is Battalion Chief Evan Sifki.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of City Council. Chief Sifki, at the Fire Department, we appreciate the proclamation this evening. This is a really important kind of kickoff to our holiday season, and we appreciate your support, as well as the community, year after year donating many, many toys. Last year, we were just short of 4,500 toys that were collected and distributed. There's tremendous amount of effort goes into organizing the toys into age groups and then organizing based on the requests and distributing those toys out to the different charitable organizations. They're all come back to the local charities. So if there are any member of the public would like to a little bit more information, you can go to our website, elsagundofd.org. And under the events section, there's some links and things like that to some more information, but we really appreciate the support. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem, over to you.
Thank you. I have the honor and privilege of reading our proclamation regarding American Indian Heritage Month. Whereas, the City of El Segundo encourages and promotes strong, diverse, and inclusive communities that recognize and celebrate efforts to bring people together for a greater good. And whereas, the City of El Segundo honors the Tongva people, the original inhabitants of El Segundo, who have been recognized by the State of California, the California General Assembly, and the Los Angeles County with a depiction of the Tongva woman on the Los Angeles County seal. And whereas, the City of El Segundo recognizes that, as part of Los Angeles County, we occupy land originally and still cared for by the Tongva, the Tapian, Surrano, Kurs, and Kushman people. We honor and pay respects to their elders and descendants, past, present, and future, as they continue their stewardship of these lands and waters. And whereas, National Native American or American Indian Heritage Month was first celebrated in 1976, when Congress proclaimed Native American Awareness Week. In November of 1986, President Reagan designated American Indian Week. In November of 1980, President Bush designated National American Indian Heritage Month. And whereas, the celebration of American Indian Heritage Month honors the culture, resilience, history, and legacy of indigenous peoples, the City of El Segundo is committed to cultural preservation, learning and education, and values and uplifts all people. Now therefore, on this fourth day of November 2025, the mayor and members of the City Council of the City of El Segundo, California, hereby proclaim the month of November 2025 as American Indian Heritage Month in recognition of diverse Native and Indigenous communities and in support of our collective efforts towards truth, equity, and accountability for all. So we'll accept this on behalf of everyone in the city, and thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Madam Clerk, have we looking at public communication?
We have three people who would like to address the council this evening, neither or none of which are related to an agendized item.
All right, four minutes each, please.
I would like to invite Shelley Brennan Camp to address the council, please.
Hi there. I'm standing here in front of you in regard to Candy Cane Lane. As we know, there's gonna be some issues coming up this year because it's already started. I've managed Candy Cane Lane for over 30 years now. And we are trying to make it easier for the city and easier for all the residents, as easy as it can be with as crazy as it has gotten. The major form is the selling of items on the street, the tchotchkes, the hot chocolate, the everything. You know, we don't want our efforts for the holiday cheer to become commercialized. The last year, there were people selling hot chocolate and popcorn, which we know we have done in years past, but we've always let somebody do it for one night or two nights to fundraise for an event. My child did it. Children on the block have done it. We have asked families to do it for one or two nights. Families have monopolized the full program. Depending on how long that is, it could be seven nights to 14 nights. So we're trying to shut down any selling. Last year, we shut down the tchotchke selling. They had to be at Sycamore Park, but then people let them on their property to be able to do it. So they had, they were right on the corner of California and Acacia, selling them on people's properties. We don't want it to be commercialized. We do this for the fun and for the enjoyment of people in town and out of town that are less privileged, that can come and walk around and see Christmas lights. We appreciate that there's kids that want to do fundraisers, but there are other avenues. There's many other avenues. And my husband would be more than happy if some kids would go sell hot dogs at the Fourth of July. It's kind of un-American that nobody has hot dogs at the Fourth of July at the park, but there we are. There's fairs that this is set up for. It's not set up. You know, we don't want it in our neighborhood where all the residents are affected by it. It's not just one house. It's gonna come across as there's one house because there is one major house that sells every night, but it's the houses on the next block that let tamale vendors set up. Like I said, the house is on the next block that let the tchotchke sellers set up. And if you do it, you know, if we have to get down to it, you know, it needs, it should just be for fundraising, not for anybody's profit. I know a lot of the money from the one house goes to Mayberry Christmas, and we are more than happy to donate money from Santa's tent because there are buckets there that people put money in to take pictures with Santa, and it's all donation-wise. And we're more than happy to donate some of that money to Mayberry Christmas. We've always donated it to family in need. We donate it to Children's Hospital, and we donate it to El Segundo families, and we've donated to Mayberry Christmas in the past. Major thing is the amount of trash that's created by this. We had to call the city out. The city sent trash pickup every day, but we had to call and have them come walk through Candy Cane Lane with trash bags at seven, eight o'clock at night because all the trash cans were already full from the full potential of that. We're the house with the trains. We have kids throw popcorn at our trains. You know, we have kids reach across with the balloon things that they're selling with trains. It's not just us. There's other people that have issues with them leaving litter on their yard, trying to hit their decorations with stuff. You know, Torrance shut it down, and there's 20, 30 blocks in Torrance. There's no reason we can't shut down four blocks from selling in El Segundo. We have stopped doing Santa on the weekends because the crowds are so large, and we don't want people mulling around because people mulling around and standing there for too long just creates reason for, you know, altercations, reason for theft, reasons for vandalism. You know, come look at the lights and leave. And if you're standing in line for 20 minutes waiting for hot chocolate and cocoa, or you're enjoying your hot chocolate and cocoa, then you're just gonna be hanging out longer. And I think for, for traffic and everything else, you should be done.
Maybe you're time.
Okay. I'm about done. That's it. So I'd appreciate you guys trying to back us with this because it's, it's a lot of work and it's a lot of put out for the residents. And if we could stop Candy Cane Lane, some people would be more than happy to, but I don't even, I think we're past that point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to invite Avery Smith.
Good evening, everybody. Good to see you. Good to see some old faces here. I wanted to talk a little bit about what's gone on the last couple of council meetings regarding, regarding the Latino community and that situation. And I'm really here, quite honestly, to, I would imagine a lot of times people come for public comments to criticize or to share maybe a point of view that may be overly critical, but I wanted to address what I thought was very positive. Thought Councilwoman Keldorf's comments regarding the Latino community were very positive and very well timed. I think there is never a late time for a beautiful comment, and I really appreciated it. I can't accept it as part of a member of the Latino community. However, I think when you do for one community that's marginalized, you do for all. And so I think it's really important, as someone who considers himself an ally, to come here and point that out. At the same time, I do think that there were certain things that were said, just overall, that I think, you know, informs on the point that I'm concerned about our city and the acceptance of our city for marginalized folks of color. And so I think one of the comments that you made, Councilwoman Keldorf, that again, I thought came from a really beautiful heart and really open mind, but I think concerned me a little bit was when you said, and I'm paraphrasing, in regards to, you know, if, you know, people do not feel comfortable coming up and speaking, then as a community or as a council, we've kind of lost the plot, and that may be the demise of, you know, of this system. At the same time, there are so many people in El Segundo and in the cities around El Segundo that have never, ever felt comfortable here. That have never, ever, I couldn't even get them to a DEI committee, a committee meeting, much less the city council. And so sometimes, again, we speak with an open heart and a sound mind, but sometimes we have, our lenses are like this. And so we don't sometimes see those communities on the margins that, again, have never felt welcome here and have never felt comfortable coming to the city council meetings. And so I wanted to say that, but again, I also wanted to stress that the reason I'm here is because of what you said. That was positive. The reason I'm here is because you gave me hope that this city and the five folks in front of me really, really do care about everybody. And I know all of you well. I love all of you. You guys are awesome. And, you know, even my favorite kid in El Segundo may or may not be one of your kids. First initial J, last initial B. I'm not, that's all I would say. But, and so I think what we do, unfortunately, is we tend to put people in boxes too quick. We tend to say, hey, if you said this, this means that you don't like these people or you don't like those people. And I don't believe that about any of you. But I do also believe, again, that we can do more. I will say just really quick before I'm done that the City of Glendale, I thought did something really powerful in 2020. They issued a proclamation where they acknowledged the past damage that they had towards communities of color. And I thought that was a nice first step because in 2025, right, with the situation with ICE, they terminated their contract in regards to holding federal detainees for immigration. So that, that initial proclamation was a first step, and it really informed them to make that decision in 2025. So in closing, again, I would just say, I have a lot of faith and confidence in you guys. I think the first step for El Segundo is checking in on the DEI committee. I think a lot of them don't necessarily feel like they know where they stand. And I think that, that would be amazing because I really love the city, and I just want to see it be the best for everybody. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Forgive me if I mispronounce your name. Galia Niss.
So I only brought one flyer. Would you like to pass the flyer first?
Ma'am, please go ahead.
Go ahead?
Yes, please.
All right, so I'm here not to talk about my, about anything political. I'm here to talk about my anti-Semitic experience in El Segundo. And it happened a lot recently. This was, for me, at the moment, the last straw. It was posted not far from my house. And I believe that a few encounters that I had in El Segundo was not addressed properly. I can talk about a couple of them that I experienced recently. There was a rally here in town. I was on my way to a bagel shop, and I just joined them. Obviously, it was a pro-Palestinian rally. Very fast, they realized that I'm Jewish. I'm wearing my Star of David very proudly. They asked me to leave. They were physical with me. There was security there. There was police there, and they ran me over with a bike. I had a mark on my leg for about a week. They tried to intimidate me without success. And eventually, I was asked to leave because I was causing the chaos. I was the only Jewish person, Jewish woman with about over 100 pro-Palestinians. And I had to leave eventually. I wasn't feeling safe. Could I have stayed there? Yes. Did I make a better choice? Yes. And I left. I was driving down Main Street the other day, and a high school kid came out of school and started yelling death threats at me. "I'm gonna kill you. You're all gonna die." Carried on and on and on. I was watching him. He went into his mom's car. I followed him, blocked her, and asked her, "How come she's not saying anything to him?" She said, "No, he's a good boy. He's making a mistake." He started yelling at me in Arabic, which is the language that is spoken by the Palestinians. Not knowing I'm Israeli, I did serve in the IDF. I was in Gaza for eight months. I've learned a lot of Arabic. So I replied right back, which put him in a shock. Sent him into a rage, started with a death threat. The high school principal knows about it. The police, I believe, is aware about it. I'm not sure what happened, but there's no follow-up. There's no, we can't accept this. There's no, oh, wow, the Jews are getting mistreated here. My daughters went to high school here. There was swastika drawn on their desks. There's a lot going on in the city. And I believe that since October 7th, it's not safe to speak up. A lot of Jews don't feel safe to speak up. I feel otherwise. I'm willing to, to talk to anyone, educate anybody, but I want something to be done about the anti-Semitism in El Segundo. It's just not okay. My daughters learned to put their Star of David back into their shirts when they come back to El Segundo. They went to school here. I don't want to go and fight anybody. I don't want to, I don't want this child from the high school to get into trouble. It's, the bigger picture is what bothers me, that the school knows about it, the police knows about it, no follow-up. With the rally, I was hurt. I was injured. Did I speak too much? Yeah. Did I, was I in their face? Yes, I was. Did I use any physical contact? No. But they attacked me. Was there, they asked me to leave. They said, "You're causing a chaos here in El Segundo." I just want to know what can we do about this? And how can we speak more, make this more of awareness that there is some sort of anti-Semitism here? And this flyer, not okay. And I believe it was posted all over El Segundo.
You're over time, ma'am.
So, thank you. Thank you for listening.
All right, anything further? City manager comments?
Only comment regarding the first speaker, I would just share with you that our Parks, Recreation, and Library Department will be having a neighborhood meeting on Thursday to discuss a number of the issues you brought up regarding Candy Cane Lane, so I ask you to please attend that. Those are the only comments, Mayor.
Anything on environmental stuff, Hyperion or Chevron?
Sure.
If you want to do that at the end.
Yeah, I can do that now or at the end. I'll do it at the end.
Hold on a second, Chris. So question on the Candy Cane Lane piece. Is this something we should bring up later or not? There's enough going on as far as different aspects of this, changes and things that we're looking to make. I do believe that should be probably discussed up here.
Can, they're gonna have their, they have their community meeting on Thursday to try and resolve some of this, and maybe it comes back to us after that with some results.
Yeah, I would say, but if it doesn't come back to the next meeting, it's not gonna happen because Candy Cane Lane starts before, I think, the fall, the, when is, when is the first day of it?
Any one of you can ask to put this on the next agenda.
13th, all right, so there is, there is a little bit of time.
Little bit of time.
Okay, then I'll wait. I do believe with this being now a city event, there is significant cost that we're incurring on it. It's only going higher, that we should really have a discussion on, on what the best route is going forward.
Very well. Okay, procedural motions. Can I take a motion to read all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only?
So move.
Baldino on the first, Baldino on the second, all in favor?
Aye.
No one opposed, no abstentions. Consent calendar. Does anyone have any polls tonight? Nope.
Oh.
What an anomaly.
Go quick.
Whoa, I have a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve consent calendar.
Mayor Pro Tem on the first?
On the second.
Keldorf on the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. We have no public hearings this evening. We'll move to item eight. Staff presentation on the investment portfolio report for September 2025 and investment policy statement update. Director Chung, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a presentation slide for you tonight. Let me get that up. Okay. Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, City Council members. Tonight, I have actually two items for you to receive and file. One's our investment portfolio report for September 2025, which I have about 38 slides, but try to get through it quickly. But of course, if you have questions, I'm here to answer them. And then the second item is our investment policy. We made some minor tweaks here and there, so I'm just gonna highlight items that have changed. We also provided you the redline version for you to take a look at. With that said, let me begin with our September 2025 report. It's been some time since we've come to you with the investment report, and that's because of, in January of '25, Matt Robinson, our former city treasurer, elected city treasurer, stepped down. And then City Manager appointed me as a city treasurer, so that transition. And then, of course, with other projects on my shoulders, it took some time to get the reports together. But myself, also Dino, he's back here somewhere, and Dino, and also our deputy treasurer too, Roberto, the three of us got together with Matt and was able to produce this report. And it's, it's gonna look very similar to what Matt had produced. We also edited it here and there and added some slides as well. So let me go through the presentation. The table contents, there'll be the portfolio section that I'll cover regards to our overall portfolio, the transactions that have happened for the past year, compliance regards to how we're doing per our policy, our LEAF section, our city cash flows, how our ins and outs have occurred in the past year, just a quick economic environment update, and then the annex regards to all our portfolios are listed on that final section. With that said, our portfolio, our overall portfolio is at $156.4 million. Most of that is comprised in our US Treasuries, about 36%, our CDs are 19%, and our medium-term notes are sitting around 18%. And then also our kind of our liquid cash funds. We've been parking a lot of our money in our Cal Trust and our camp funds. They've been yielding upwards to 4.25% or so. So we've been parking a lot more money in our liquid accounts instead of strapping it into long-term investments. And I'll go into more detail on subsequent slides. This is just a breakdown regards to our book value versus our market value. Market value, meaning if we were to basically sell all our investments today, what would that value be? But it just kind of gives you a comparison between book and market value. This table, I believe, is more significant to us. Looking at this, this just breaks down two, two sections of it. The top portion, the blue line, kind of gives you our yield, our average yield for the past, our overall investments. As you can see, it's kind of in that 4%, a little over 4% range. And then the bottom chart, the blue section, gives you kind of our maturity. So overall, maturity has been 2.3 years. And I'll go into a little more details in our subsequent slides. Our overall portfolio has been increasing, as you can see in this chart as well, so that's a good sign. And as I mentioned, our portfolio is sitting at $156.4 million. This chart just breaks down our, kind of our reserve, what we call our investments, versus our liquid accounts. Our investments are sitting at $113.9 million versus our liquid funds are $42.4 million. This table kind of just drills in a little more deeper, gives you a percentage breakdown. Our, our investments are 73% of our overall portfolio is invested versus 27% is liquid. 113.9, as I mentioned, is, is invested, and 42% of, 42 million of it is, is our liquid cash. And lastly, our weighted average maturity is currently sitting at 4, 3 point, or 2.3 years. This table for, for Dino, myself, and Roberto is more informational, that we get to strategize. And this, we wanted to share with the council, that really breaks down each year, what's maturing basically and how much. So this kind of gives you what we call ladder, what monies come to, to mature, and what plans or strategy do we want to do to invest these monies? And so as you can see, on the left side, that's the 2025. We have one quarter left, and we have $3 million maturing. And so in total, and we're, we're gonna strategize and see, do we want to keep that liquid or do we want to invest it? And lock in some higher yield. The big year is 26. As you can see, we have, in that green bar is the total for the four quarters and it's $28 million. And this is really the work of Matt's great job of investing our funds a couple of years ago regards to the out years. And so we're seeing that benefit. But of course, now we're going into the second, third year where most of that investment is coming to do mature. So we want to make sure we have a prudent approach to investing these funds so that we, we're not chasing yield. Of course, we want to be safe, but also we want to maximize that yield, meaning as rates continue to get lower, as the feds lower their rates, we want to lock in that yield. So we're strategizing as we speak, going into 2026, because we have quite a bit of funds maturing. With that said, this next chart is just a little more detail on what investments are maturing. Not going to go through each and every one of them, but in 2026, as I mentioned, we have over $12 million of CDs that are going to mature. Another 12 million of US Treasury that's going to mature. So we have a total of, as I mentioned, $28 million that we need to make sure we invest so that we can maximize our yield. This table really just breaks down, the left column of the green funds is the liquid funds, as I mentioned. These are just cash investments that we move into either Cal Trust or Camp. And then on the, on the blue side, the right side, is just kind of shows you the various investments that are going to mature and at what time. And most of it, as I mentioned, is in that one to two to two to three year, as you can see in the middle of that blue table or blue bar graph. Transactions, so this just kind of breaks down what we've done in the past, at least the three months. And that gray bar there, that minus $11.9 million, that was an actual purchase or an investment that we did. So we purchased a five-year, $12 million US Treasury that's yielding us 4.25%. So we locked that in back in July and hence it's a purchase. We've had some various interest earnings is in the blue and then also the orange is what has matured for the past three months. This is just kind of expanding the year from going all the way back to October 24 to September 2025. And as you can see, the gray, as I mentioned, is investments that we've purchased. And the blue is interest earned that we've earned from our investments. And then the orange is investments that have matured during this period of time. This table just really portrays that we've been actively investing our funds, that we haven't just been putting it in a checking account. We wanted to maximize our yield. So that dark blue just means that these are liquid investments, meaning we put it into Camp or Cal Trust, as I mentioned. And then the light blue are purchases that we've done. And as you can see, going all the way back to October 2023 versus September of 25, we had quite a bit of activity regards to liquid accounts because those were yielding almost the same yield as long-term investments. So we've utilized that quite a bit, as you can see in this graph. Compliance is a key factor in our investment, being that we want to mirror our, our policy. And this just shows that we are in compliance per our policy as we go through each of the items that have been invested. And as you can see, we meet the policy requirements. This is just a long list. I know you can't read that, but this just lists out the various ratings that we have for the bonds. The most important table is this right here regards to any, any bonds or medium term notes that we've purchased that are under the AAA rating, we wanted to reflect here. And as you can see, most are triple B plus or even triple B. So we're just keeping an eye on it. We just wanted to inform the council that if it dips anywhere below that, we might consider, we might have to sell that or not. But those are kind of decisions or overview that, that my team and I, we do on a, probably a regular basis. Just making sure our investments are, are doing well. LEAF section, we only, we used to put quite a bit of money in LEAF, but we do not. Currently, it's a little less than $50,000. So I'm just going to skip over most of this. LEAF usually trails behind the market. It's currently sitting at a little over 4%, so it's kind of caught up. But this is information that was provided in the past. We wanted to keep this just in case that we do eventually go back into investing into LEAF. But overall, this just shows that their daily rate matches their quarterly rate and also the days of maturity.
During COVID, I mean, LEAF was our investment. I mean, that is, I think it's important because that's our, that's our safe harbor. So it's worth noting.
Most agencies use LEAF, but being that, as I mentioned, Cal Trust and Camp, they've been yielding actually higher than LEAF and it's as safe. We've been utilizing that investment more. But we might go back to LEAF at one point too as well. It's an option. Jumping to city cash flows, this really just, I know it's hard to read, but really the significance of this is just the orange line means money's going out. And we've had quite a bit of money going out in June. Typically, seasonality, meaning every June, we have our POB, bond payment that goes out, $8 million. And then in July, we have our liability, our risk pool that we need to pay for our liability insurance. That's close to $3 million. So you see that dip in the orange. But of course, as we go towards this November and December, you'll see the blue line increase because we'll bring in our property tax during those months. This just provides additional detail regards to our cash flow. As you can see, if you go to that April versus kind of May, you start seeing that big dip. And that, as I mentioned, is, it happens every year, meaning as we go into April, May and June, we make our big payments for our POB in June. And then of course, in July, we make that insurance payment. But then of course, we go right back up as we collect our.
Can you go back one slide though? We do the 13 months so we can see the year on year. Is there a reason why our credits seem to be, I mean, the debit is broadly in line, but the credit's substantially lower?
So if we're, for the September 25s, the six million?
Yeah.
So that, great question, Mayor, and it was really.
Oh, thank you. I worked on it.
When I, when I reviewed it too, that was my first, I was like, ooh, that looks lower than we should be back in September of 24. Many things, but it's mostly timing of receipts. So once we come back in three months, you'll probably see that September actually revised up. And that's really what's driving.
Oh, okay, that's it. There's a, there's a revision that may go in, understood.
Yes. And then this, this table here has always been shown to the council and it maybe touches on what Mayor mentioned. But really, if you look at the middle line, that's hard to see, I know, between that negative five million and above five million, there's, there's a line. And maybe next, next report will probably put a color there. But really, that just means that we are using more money than we're bringing in when it dips below that. But then when you go above, when the, when the graph goes above that line, that means we're actually spending money that we've actually collected and we're putting that aside. So as I mentioned, those months of May through June, July is when we dip into our liquid accounts. And we also had our plunge project that was quite a bit of a large CIP project. So we dip into kind of our liquid account, but then as soon as property taxes come in, we go right back above and we start using our regular account instead of dipping into our liquid account. Economic environment, really, this is just kind of a overall, the pulse of the economy. The feds, as you know, have been slowly decreasing their rates and it is anticipated that we'll continue to lower rates. So how does that impact us? Really, it's just our investment yield, as I mentioned, as we put a lot of money in liquid funds, that, that rate will continue to get smaller. So we want to make sure we lock into future investments, whether it be a one-year or a five-year investment that will maximize our yield. So as my team and I, we review what's the best investment tool that we want to dip into. And we review that on a very periodic basis. This is, I know this looks like a wave, but really this kind of shows a US Treasury from one month to a five, five-year. And really, the most important thing is that way back in, in, you know, 2013, the black line is that five-year. And then the bottom blue or gray lines, those are kind of the short-term. Obviously, on a, in a normal kind of period, the longer you put aside money, you earn more. But then we've got into this unique environment that short-term investments are earning more than long-term investments. So, but we are seeing some changes as, as the feds continue to lower the rates. So we don't have a crystal ball, but we are eyeing this pretty closely to make sure we lock in any kind of investments that can yield us maximum investment return. This is just a quick unemployment versus inflation. Overall, unemployment's just been flat at around 6% of, I think, 5%. And then also our inflation has just been about 2.5% the past couple of years. This table just kind of shows a 10-year versus a minus a three-year treasury yield spread. So really just kind of showing what, does it make sense to go longer or short? And as you can see, there really is no deviation right now. It's really flat, meaning whether you put it in long-term or short-term, the yield at least is showing that there's not really a big difference right now, at least at this current time. And the five-year break-even inflation prediction, this just kind of shows, it's not predicting the future because nobody can predict the future. It just kind of looks back how inflation has been, at least the last couple of years. As you can see, it's been hovering around 2.5%. As the feds decrease rates, it is known that inflation is supposed to spike back up. So as I mentioned, we're eyeing that closely. And just the last section is the annex. Really, this is just a list of all our investments, just to make sure it's on record. And then I go ahead and certify the report for the council. So that's just my first section. Does council have any questions on the September portfolio report? Nope? Okay. Let me just finish off here.
You split by that Altria investment without anybody in the back? There we go. Look at you, I thought you were going to get away with it.
All right. I'll take it. And I'll just finish here really quickly regards to our investment policy. It hasn't been updated since October 1st of 2022. So most of this is, and it's in your packet, I don't have a presentation for you, but we provided a red line version. So you, you can see what has changed. Really, as I mentioned, it's more of wordsmithing or formatting, being that a lot of the language that we changed had to do with the, the elected city treasurer versus the appointed city treasurer. But the big significant changes I just wanted to highlight is on page three or page 91 of the agenda packet. We did add a note on the very top section just to kind of clarify the changes that has happened. But I did speak to Mark earlier regards to one sentence that we do need to change. When I finalize this, is that currently it reads, as of November 2024, the chief financial officer has been appointed as a city treasurer by the city of El Segundo, the city council. That needs to be fixed and it needs to read, as of January 2025, the chief financial officer has been appointed as a city treasurer by the city manager. That's part of our ordinance and I just wanted to make sure that gets properly reflected on our policy when I finalize this. Beyond that, just, I believe on page eight of the policy, we also made some minor tweaks regards to just formality. I think page nine is probably the most significant, if, if it was, meaning on page, section 12 of the Investment Advisory Committee on paragraph three, it currently reads, the IAC shall have four members, but we just put in up to four members. We thought, instead of saying it has to have four, we thought having up to four members, it just made it, gave us a little more flexibility. And the current members, as you are aware, is council member Michelle Keldorff, Roger Neves, Vincent Zepo and, and myself, the city treasurer. And then the rest, page 10 has minor changes and that reflects the, the final changes on the investment policy. That concludes my presentation. Does council have any other questions for the investment policy?
Thank you for the presentation, Paul. Moving forward, I know you presented this at the Finance Committee. Do you want to talk to council now about the possibility of an RFP for financial management, the pros and cons, what the process would be to go through and vet that?
Absolutely. So we, as of actually today, we posted a RFQ for Investment Financial Advisory Services. So that's out, out on our city website, posted. We've actually reached out to our brokers, some of the investment firms that might want to be interested in submitting their qualifications. I forget, it's probably due in about a month, right? December 15 is when those are expected to be submitted to us for review. So I know the investment, the Finance Committee had mentioned, maybe some local El Segundo resident or business might be interested in applying for that RFQ. It's, as I mentioned, it's posted on our website.
And once you get the responses, what is the process that you're going to go through to evaluate and ultimately select? And will that come back to council?
So we will evaluate it. There's an evaluation criteria. And typically advisor, advisory firms, they'll take a percentage, a basis point off of what they bring in. So we'll kind of, not only evaluate on terms of cost, but also just overall services, their experience. And then, once we do the selection, I'll probably meet with, I will meet with the city manager and discuss the potential company if we were to go with the advisory firm and then bring it back to the Finance Committee and also the, the Investment Advisory Committee as well. And then come back to the council to execute a contract if we were to move that direction.
Okay, thank you. I know in the policy change, we revised the portion where the treasurer would submit reports to the CFO, correct? That was our check mechanism, write that backwards. Sorry? CFO would have to submit a monthly. Can, can you just, for, for the, for the viewers at home, what's our check and balance on that now? Because before that was the, the check on transparency and to make sure that we were complying. Do we have, do you, do you report that to the city manager now? Who reviews it?
That, you, you, I would say, because I am the city treasurer and I produce.
Do you wear both hats?
Yes, I do wear.
So you have the keys and the safe?
Yes, I do have the keys and the safe. Checks and balance wise, I would say it would go to the city manager after it gets drafted and then it'll go to the council. Do we have another layer of, of review? We do not at this time. So I guess.
But there used to be a monthly, a monthly correspondence where treasurer to CFO, here's what our transactions were. CFO looks at it, we agree that, that they comply. So now is it monthly that it goes from you to city manager?
I would say, I was thinking that IAC does also, because we presented to the IAC the September report, but we meet on a quarterly basis. So I would say we probably, the checks and balances would be that we will present the, to the IAC, the three months worth for the quarterly report. And then also, and then share with the city, or city manager and then come to city council for, to report on the, the three months.
Okay. Anything further? Do we have consensus to receive and file?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Chung. All right, we have no committees, commissions and board presentations now. Report, Madam Clerk.
Well, it is my distinct pleasure to introduce to all of you Serena Lopez. She is our new deputy city clerk. And you will see her up at the, at the desk doing her thing. She's hit the ground running. She comes to us with several years of municipal experience from up on the hill and rolling hills, rolling hills. So she's just already an invaluable member of our team. I also would like to welcome students from Orange County Christian School. Orange Lu. What is it? Orange. Okay, thank you. They are here getting class credit. They got to select a council meeting to attend and being the good students that they are, this was their deadline. They have to be.
They look for the shortest agenda.
And I know, that's what I was telling. You guys have no idea. How lucky.
These are first choice.
Sure.
You were playing water polo, right?
We didn't play it, they lost.
There we have it. And then of cour, thank you and welcome. We're so glad, we hope some of you will go into civic government. But also would be remiss if I didn't wish happy birthdays to a couple of people from, are we going to do that? Oh, and also your birthday. Is that something you plan to do? But I, yeah, I was voluntold too. Wish happy birthdays to Mary Jean Ramos and Christina, Christina Revelis. They are from the city manager's office. They share an office together, so it's kind of a coincidence that they share a birthday as well and that they're the fun office. And I think that's it. Congratulations to all those Dodger fans out there.
So, Orange County rooting for the Dodgers, look at that. Councilor Keldorff? Uh, Councilor Keldorf.
Well, welcome, Serena, we're happy to have you. Just quickly, going back to public comments, Ms. Nice, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, I'm not quite sure that I am, but thank you for coming and sharing with us. I saw the post on social media, and not everybody does have access to social media. So to Mr. Smith's point, it's not always comfortable to come and, and speak, and I appreciate you doing that. Anecdotally, I do know a couple of instances of families who have had similar experiences and have not felt comfortable speaking publicly or even reporting those incidents to police. So I do want to reiterate that that is, that is necessary for us to know what's going on. So thank you for taking the time to do so.
Councilor Drew.
Yes, actually, I'm going to speak to that same point. Ms. Truax, can you put up on the board what I had asked to be put up before? What I'm putting up is actually the flyer that was found this past weekend. And the reason why I'm bringing this up is because, again, it, it's kind of to what our speaker was saying in public comment, this is really not necessarily about a political statement. If you look at what is, what this says, this is literally something that's happening in town. This is not something in Washington, D.C., this is not something in Maine, this is not something in the Dakotas, this actually happened here. And I would also like to point out that this is the third incident in the past eighteen months. And when I say third incident, I mean, third incident of abject anti-Semitism towards Jewish people. The first one, I think it was about eighteen months ago, and that was the Raytheon pro-Palestinian protest that quickly turned antisemitic. Second one being the pro-Palestinian protest that came through the town, which our speaker spoke to, which, again, went from being pro-something to anti-something fairly quickly. And this is the third. And the reason why I'm bringing this up is there are students in this town, there are families in this town, that was just pointed out, are, are literally afraid to show who they are. To have to hide your beliefs in twenty-twenty-five is absolutely unacceptable. This, whoever put this up, is completely unacceptable. And I think what bothers me even a little bit more than, than this, I can't say more than this, let's say it just bothers me on a different level. I had zero emails about this. And I know everybody saw it, because it was put up in the community network, and everybody lives on that thing, so please don't tell me that, that people didn't see it. They know what's going on. Zero emails, zero outrage, zero discussion, not one thing. Not one person came into this, into city hall here to, to even speak out about it. I mean, I've gotten fifty emails because I dared to say that maybe we should have D E I meetings on a quarterly basis rather than monthly, and we don't have one person that found anything wrong with this? You know, I, I would have to say there was some advice given to me a long time ago by someone very close to me, and what they said was, beware of those who ask you to stand up for them when they are unwilling to stand up for you. I really hope that people can take this a little bit more seriously and realize that inclusivity for all literally means inclusivity for all. Thank you.
All right, Councilor Voiles.
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Mayor Protam.
I'll try to be quick. I attended the South Bay C O G meeting. Two speakers, one was just Waymo making a presentation, I think mostly explaining to the elected officials there what it is, how safe it is, and that it's eventually going to expand into the South Bay. No definite timeline of when they would be willing to come here. I think they're ready, and no deadline or timeline of when they could get to L A X. The next topic was the Regional Housing Trust. They are going to basically take a two-phase approach. One is ask C O G members to vote on whether or not the C O G should set up the trust, and the second is if an individual city wants to join into that trust. Right now, they've got more questions than answers about how the trust will work, administrative fees, everything like that. There's going to be a presentation to the city manager's meeting, so hopefully we'll get more information and more details at that time. Other news I think is willing, worthwhile to share, is that we, I learned that the Redondo Beaches housing element got rejected by a court because they was challenged by a builder, the judge sided with the builder on their overlays not being compliant, because they included not just residential but commercial and industrial uses. So now they're in a builder's remedy situation. They're hoping to appeal that to the, the Supreme Court.
And that was two elements ago, right? It wasn't their most recent element, it's element six, not seven.
Yeah.
Which is crazy.
It's, you know, you've got the state dictating, and now you've got a court dictating, so a lot of dictating. Other more fun news, I want to thank Ryan Delgado and the entire Parks and Rec staff for the Halloween frolic. If you haven't seen the Thriller dance at two o'clock on Main Street, it is a sight to be seen. I want to thank Kiwanis for sponsoring the Kiwanis Cup, always a good time. And I attended the opening of Y L S Bakery Cafe with the mayor, which is located right next to Gemantica and, what's the Japanese place I'm blanking on?
Japonica.
Japonica, right. So go say hi to our new Bakery Cafe, and that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, those delicious pastries. I don't turn down free pastries, man, you know. Uh, no, not a chance. Thank you, Mayor Protam. To be brief, we had an update meeting at the county on the potential sale of the Mesquite landfill site out in Imperial County. That is going to, there was an R F Q, there was a number of, of people interested in conceivably purchasing it, that's not a decision to be made yet, but in broad strokes, what that means, that is probably a close to half-billion-dollar sale by L.A. County Sanitation. On the other hand, you have a public access landfill of basically infinite capacity that, for us, with a number of smaller vendors looking for a place to tip their trash, it could make sense. So that continues to go in the background. I will update you, because that is a substantial sale and could offset some of the costs of our pure water, water recycling project. You touched on the Measure A stuff from the C O G. Councilor Keldorf, Metro has released a major events transportation playbook. I'm sure it'll be a thrilling reading. I asked who is in charge of liaising that with the major events. They're going, they promised to get back to us. So they have a playbook, we don't know if FIFA or the Olympics would use it, but they do have a playbook, and they published it to other cities, so I think it's probably good.
We know who to check with.
Oh, that's right.
Our honor planning commission.
The co-motion is coming up. Co-motion is one of those like bizarre things we get solicited for. It's the big municipal transportation convention. If any of you have time to go, I have a conflict this year, it is, that's where you learn, like, hey, the, the train to Las Vegas is ahead of schedule, you know? I mean, those, those things occur, a lot of these last mile driving services, Waymo was once the bell, the star, the star of the show there. So if you have an, get an opportunity to go, I recommend it. Dewali last week was super fun, if you had a chance to observe it. South Bay Aerospace Alliance met, we have the Deputy Assistant Secretary of the Air Force, supposed to be in town at the end of the week, evaluating installations. That is a grave concern to us, so we'll report back. We have an effort going to build the complete story of the environmental impact of the Air Force Base. Deputy City Manager, we have requests to get our information packet from Congressman Lou's office, so they can send to the primes as well. So I'm going to forward you an email, so you can annoyingly forward it back and say, why don't you send it yourself? Because I cannot. We have Eddie Awards tomorrow for economic development. We'll see who wins most business-friendly city, because we're ineligible this year. State of the City next week, Chamber, German Chamber of Commerce call tomorrow, some German delegation. I don't think it's about special, special events, I think it's about economic development, but I will report to you if it is about events. And I had the awkward attendance at L A D W P's Water and Power Commission meeting last week, where they talked about scattergood and discussed their in-depth communications with the city of El Segundo, which, of course, I mean, maybe they got a cousin named El Segundo. Man, you didn't talk to me. There, they briefed, they think the hydrogen plant, well, one, I want to be clear, that plant does not make any electricity right now. They want to keep it alive in case they need to make electricity. Its total capacity would be three hundred megawatts. Three hundred megawatts is about enough after an earthquake to run, you know, give or take six El Segundos if we're running our data center. So it's not like it's lighting up the entire L.A. basin. Their plan, which they were labeling as green hydrogen, which it would not be, would be blue hydrogen, right? They would be taking hydrogen off of Chevron, but they kept labeling it green to make it sound better. They will basically remove the gas turbines they have now, put in a combined-cycle turbine of a novel construction that in the future could use fifty percent blue hydrogen. Why that's important is it will take, by their own admission, at least six years longer than they think and be three times as expensive. The current sticker price on this project is eight hundred fifty million dollars. Their internal analysis said it would be probably three times that in today's dollars, that's without factoring in inflation in the six years late it would take to build it. There are forty groups that got up to speak in favor of this, not one of them, I think, was a dispassionate and objective assessor of the situation. So we have asked to speak to the head of L A D W P, she's agreed to meet in early December. I sent a note to the commission chair, Mr. Katz, to advise him that the people talking to him were not talking to us. I will see where that gets us, but as of now, we continue to have a dormant power plant full of people that think it's going to run on a thing it won't run on. So there's your encouraging note for the week. Next week, we have Veterans Day, and most importantly, the two-hundred-fiftieth anniversary and birthday of your Marine Corps. I will not be answering my phone. All right, city manager and city attorney, anything from you?
Nothing from the city attorney. Yes, Mayor, just a couple items, a few more details on State of the City, which is November thirteenth at California Smash, eight fifteen, North Nash, from eleven-thirty to one-thirty. I just want the community to know that they can get their tickets through the chamber for the State of the City. Regarding, I know, Mayor, you asked earlier in terms of conversations with A Q M D, I was finally able to connect with the head of the Inspection and Enforcement Division, name is Terrence Mann, and he, he was very forthcoming. They have been working on their report, meeting regularly with the folks from Chevron. And really, when they're, while they're conducting their inspection, they're looking for any rules that may have been broken, any negligence that they foresee that may have happened during or causing the fire, recurring violations that may have impacted what happened. So all of that will be taken into account. He's anticipating his, his final report, even though it's not a, an incident report, will come out in a notice, an N O V, a notice of violation sometime in early December. So I will keep in contact with him.
Did they have any sampling? Because when we spoke to them initially, they said they were on the ground doing sampling that was different but complimentary to what our air monitors were. They said they had handheld samples, and they were sampling the air on site to see what's released from a burning building, what's released from a burning pipe.
Yes, that was another division within A Q M D, and that was the monitoring division, and they, they did a number of samplings, and there was nothing that, that proved to be abnormal.
Can we get that report?
Yes.
Okay, because so far, they just keep referring us back to reports we already have.
Okay.
And saying, oh, the air monitoring looks great, like, we have those air monitors.
Okay.
We want theirs, because people won't believe us if we just say, we checked it, it looks fine.
Okay. Yep, I will follow up, but that's a different division, but I'll, I'll get that from there. But as I said, the, the actual inspect, the final inspection and enforcement report won't be available till early December. And then also, the OSHA report is probably early next year, in terms of the.
Cal OSHA's report?
Cal OSHA's report, yes.
Early next year?
Yes, several months on that report. Turning to Hyperion, city staff will be attending a check-in, a quarterly check-in meeting with staff over at Hyperion this Thursday morning over at their facility. Since the last council meeting, A Q M D has received twenty-seven odor complaints and issued, did not issue any notices of violation, first time in a long time.
They should come sit in my backyard, because that's gross.
Okay. Hyperion will be replacing an air damper at the Headworks Building tomorrow, and that will require temporary interruption of the air scrubber between the hours of four A.M. and eight A.M. tomorrow morning. So maybe those odor complaints will go up a bit tomorrow morning. Actually, the, the most important piece of the report is, I don't know if you saw in the L.A. Times, that the general manager of the sanitation bureau, Barbara Romero, will be retiring. She announced that on October twenty-seventh, and her last day is probably December twenty-seventh or twenty-eighth, so the general manager will be stepping down at Hyperion. So we'll keep an eye on that, where that goes. That concludes my report.
Sorry to lose you, Elias, but you go take the job for us. I mean, I think the pay's good. Okay, we are going to adjourn open session and go back to closed. The time is now seven-ten, we need about a five-minute break, a bio break? All right. Thank you all, we are adjourned.